Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to the March 11, 2019 City Council Meeting and Public Forum. It looks like we have a robust group today, so thank you all for coming. And we actually are going to begin with ceremonial matter, which we do when an issue comes before us that deserves a little, some recognition by the city. And so we'll begin tonight's meeting by recognizing a significant achievement by the men and women of the Eugene Police Department. With us are Police Chief Chris Skinner and Ed Boyd, Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance and Retired Chief of Police. I'm wondering if you would please come forward. In 2018, the Eugene Police Department went through the recertification process with the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, which issued EPD its first certificate of accreditation in 2015. The Oregon Accreditation Alliance is governed by the Oregon Accreditation Alliance Board, comprised of representatives from the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, and the Oregon Chapter of the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. To be accredited, an agency must meet 102 professional standards comprised of over 400 separate requirements contained within those standards. The OAA reviewed the department and its policies to ensure compliance to the highest level of professional standards of accountability, management, and operations. This type of oversight requires courage, transparency, and commitment on the part of every employee in the Eugene Police Department. Agencies go through a recertification process every three years. In addition to the achievement we are celebrating tonight, Central Lane 911 also received its certificate of accreditation from OAA in 2016, and EPD's forensic evidence unit successfully renewed its accreditation in 2017 after becoming the state's first local lab-awarded American Society of Crime Laboratory Director's accreditation in 2013. Please join me in congratulating the Eugene Police Department on their achievements and welcoming Mr. Boyd to present the accreditation.
Not much. Well, good evening. Again, as mentioned, my name is Ed Boyd. I am privileged to be the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance and, as mentioned, the Retired Chief of Police as well. I want to thank Chief Skinner for his invitation here tonight. Very pleased to be here to present the Eugene Police Department with their certificate of state re-accreditation. On a side note, I've known Chief Skinner for a little over 20 years at this point and was very pleased when he came back to Oregon and the city of Eugene. Very happy about that. As you very, very, very clearly mentioned, accreditation is all about standards. It is simply that. Our profession, our agencies are all about standards. We have standards to become a police officer to begin with, standards to graduate from the police academy, we have standards to be certified as an officer, and standards for the varying levels of certifications that we hold through Department Public Safety Standards and Training. We continually preach and demand standards of accountability, standards of performance, and standards of conduct. Accreditation means that an agency, their operations, their management, policies, and procedures meet the best practices that the industry has to offer. The accreditation process in general is a progressive and contemporary way of helping law enforcement agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance and provides formal and professional recognition that an agency meets or exceeds best practice standards for service and quality in the profession. As reference to be accredited, an agency must meet 102 professional standards contained of over 400 separate bullets and requirements contained within those standards. Right now in Oregon, right at 36% of all law enforcement agencies are involved in the accreditation process, and just a little over 23% of Oregon agencies are actually currently hold state accreditation. There are currently 61 law enforcement 911 agencies involved in the accreditation program, and right now currently 43 are accredited. It also, in my opinion, takes courage for an organization to take on the rigorous accreditation process. Anytime the chief executive officer of an organization invites an outside third party into their department to review and inspect everything associated with their operations and render an opinion as to whether they meet a set of best practice standards for a given profession, that by itself shows commitment, transparency, and dedication to excellence. Eugene Police Department joined the Oregon Accreditation Alliance in January of 2014 and achieved their first accreditation in 2015, which is actually very quick. Most agencies don't do it in that short of a timeframe. This is the department's second award of accredited status and the first under Chief Skinner. Once an agency receives accredited status, they are reevaluated and assessed every three years. And it is through the commitment and direction of chiefs, sheriffs, and 911 directors that their respective agencies undertake the rigorous process to begin with. And although it is truly an agency-wide effort to achieve accreditation, specific recognition needs to be given to the accreditation managers, the point people who make it happen. Special recognition in this case needs to go to Accreditation Manager Sergeant Kyle Williams for his outstanding work in preparing the agency for accreditation. It is now my distinct honor and pleasure to present Chief Skinner and the Eugene Police Department with their second consecutive award of accredited status.
Chief Skinner, on behalf of the Oregon Accreditation Board of Directors, it is my pleasure to present you with your award of accreditation.
Thank you, sir.
So I wouldn't be a chief of police if I didn't take the opportunity to say something. I'm going to. As Chief Boyd alluded to, really, a couple of thanks. First of all, to Sergeant Kyle Williams, who's sitting right here. Could not have done that without him, and so I really appreciate his efforts. Also, would like to thank this community, because when you think about a police department trying to become the best it can be, how you become the best is you have a community that constantly challenges you and challenges what you're doing, and you respond to that. And so much of this accreditation is a result of this community constantly asking the question, why, and can we get better? And so I appreciate this community and how engaged they are. Special thanks to the Police Commission, who helps take a look at the policies and the procedures that we do to make sure that they're very best, and maybe more importantly, identifying the nuances of policy and procedure that meet this community's needs, unlike maybe any other community in the state of Oregon, and so we're very, very proud of that. So on behalf of the Eugene Police Department, it is my pleasure to accept this accreditation and great work that was started well before my arrival, but I'm happy to get this re-accreditation on behalf of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And congratulations. Okay, now we are ready for the public forum, and I'll read a few instructions. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And before we begin, just a couple of reminders that we want this to be safe for everyone to speak, whatever his or her opinion is, and so however you may feel about that as an audience, please be respectful and quiet, no outbursts. You are always welcome to wiggle your fingers in approval. And I will read two names at a time, and so the second person can sit in the warm-up seat so that we move quickly, because we have a very full house tonight. And it looks like, to give you the number, we have 41 speakers. So if you don't need to use your three minutes, or if someone before you has said essentially what you were going to say, you can shorten the time for everybody, and that would be great. So we will begin with Todd Boyle, followed by John Clor.
Hi, folks. Todd Boyle. I'm in Allen's Ward. You know, there have been 300 talks just in the last 10 days in Eugene on the topic, just on the topic of the climate catastrophe, the extinctions, the death of the oceans, and the end of ice, the crisis of industrialization, and the crisis of capitalism. And so Eugene is a happening place where this kind of thing is possible, partly because we are not subjected to much of the negative influences of having military bases nearby, or having oil and gas deposits nearby, or having very many corporate headquarters or billionaires. But actually, there are two Eugines, and one of the Eugines is, you can see in these city and county buildings and in the financial buildings around the downtown, and the county courthouse and other, the city hall that's in the dreams and stage of the city. And these are all based on the property rights, the government enforcement of contracts, protections of the secrecy of contracts, the settlement of everything by government money, and by, most of all, the legacy of the idea of land ownership and titles, of which we have 44,000 titles for residential properties downstairs here for 180,000 people. And that creates a little bit of a conflict there. So anyway, a little bit of a shortage. So the $250,000 is the price of admission for Eugene and going up all the time. The other Eugene is trying to be born here, and some things are happening that are as big as 1968. And this other Eugene is dedicated not to the physical buildings and to the, you know, the configuration of all these zoning codes, but to, not to the protection of property rights, but to development of human potential and to the development of our hearts and minds and spirits. And so these are like the non-monetary people that you see walking around, and I'm not going to say that everybody who doesn't have money is such a person, the musician, the poet, authors, thinkers, and dreamers, mystics, and not a few sages and shamans, but the fact that these people need to have a cheap way to live, and that Eugene is making that increasingly impossible. And so what you're actually doing is suffocating the cultural and spiritual development of the city by maintaining a comprehensive fabric of zoning rules and laws that make it impossible for cheap housing to happen here. I mean, there are just dozens of things that you could do, like allow people to collect rent when they let someone park the RV in the driveway. That'd be a simple thing. You could let us subdivide our sum of those 44,000 lots a little bit smaller. You could let people build, you could support HB 2001 and allow fourplexes on some of that property. So really, what I'm here for, I'm not here to ask the city to do something that is not really part of what it is, to become part of the spiritual revolution and the cultural revolution and the paradigm shift in consciousness that's happening in right here in Eugene, but what I'm asking is for you to allow that to be possible by making it cheaper to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. John Clor, followed by Lori Siegel.
Good evening, Mayor Venice, members of council. My name is John Clor. I'm the Community Affairs Manager for Northwest Natural and a resident of Ward 7. I'd like to read into the record a letter that was submitted to each of you this afternoon electronically by Northwest Natural's President and CEO. Dear Mayor Venice and members of city council, I am writing today to confirm Northwest Natural's interest in partnering with the city of Eugene to address climate change. Northwest Natural just celebrated 160 years in business. While a great deal has changed since we opened our doors in 1859, our commitment to the communities we serve has not. We understand Eugene has adopted greenhouse gas reduction targets, and we're confident Northwest Natural can achieve these reductions in a manner that maintains customer choice, system reliability, and affordability. Two years ago, Northwest Natural was one of the first natural gas utilities in the nation to outline a plan to voluntarily begin decarbonizing our system. To help us further that plan, we engaged the consultant E3, the same experts who conducted studies for EWEB and others in the region, to conduct an in-depth deep decarbonization study for the Pacific Northwest. The results show that natural gas infrastructure is a critical component to help Oregon reach its deep decarbonization goals of an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions below 1990 levels by the year 2050. The study identified very tangible ways we can collaborate with our communities to reduce emissions. I believe Eugene would be an ideal pilot community. Working together, we could pursue new and innovative approaches that could then be exported to other areas for larger climate benefit. Areas of interest include developing a renewable natural gas pilot project in Eugene, as well as new energy efficiency initiatives, and research and development of renewable hydrogen and compressed natural gas for heavy-duty transit. Northwest Natural agrees there is a need to act collectively to address climate change, and we believe this will be best achieved through shared goals and willing partners. We welcome the possibility to work together on what could be a first-of-its-kind low-carbon community partnership leveraging Northwest Natural's system. We're encouraged by the recent conversations and look forward to furthering the discussion about the progress that's possible in the months to come. Sincerely, David H. Anderson. Thank you for your time and for your leadership.
Thank you. Lori Siegel, followed by Joseph Voscher.
I'm here to request that the city council impose a moratorium on the small cell installations that are being proliferated throughout South Eugene and, to a lesser extent, at least so far, in the friendly neighborhood. The city has so far allowed this 5G deployment without any notice, permits, or even an informational paragraph with contact information in the online newsletter in Vision Eugene. I request a moratorium to allow time for a public process and adoption of an updated telecommunications ordinance that addresses 5G technology. It's been challenging at best to get help or even a response from staff, my city counselor, the Public Records Division of the City Managers Office in Public Works. Although I have tried, I didn't learn until two or three weeks ago through personal experience that this might be not unusual to not hear back from your elected official when you send them emails and ask for assistance. Because the city sent no notice, I was shocked when I learned that the unmarked trucks working 12 hours a day, three and a half, for three and a half days in front of my house, which is located on a dead-end street and designated as a place, were installing components of AT&amp;T's 5G network five feet from my property line. Research indicates Public Works' maintenance staff has made and is making all these 5G decisions, is interpreting and/or ignoring the city guidelines and providing what appears to be misleading information about the applicable provisions on the small cell technology webpage. We also don't know when the individual or tower, the individual towers or system will be activated, and the city's response to questions about that is, ask AT&amp;T. I don't see how that's possible. When asked if the AT&amp;T franchise agreement was available online, staff said yes, but that's from 1991. It doesn't have anything to do with this 5G small cell technology. AT&amp;T has so far erected 10 new towers/poles without proving, as required by the city's own documents, that there are no viable alternative locations. At least some have been cited at addresses that don't exist, including the one in front of my house. And the certifications that Public Works signed off on, were signed off on a year before many of these were installed. Several of these are on neighborhood streets and located near schools, and many, and located less than a body length from adjoining property lines, residential property lines. Each of these poles is required to host two warning signs.
Thank you. Thank you. Joseph Voscher, followed by Kathy Geng.
I live at 1210 East 29th Place. I've owned the property, and I've paid my city and county taxes for the last 33 years.
Can you state your name, please?
Joseph Vacker.
Thank you.
I'm in Allen's Ward. I'm here to address the 5G small cell tower build-out. It was installed on a new EWEB pole, not an existing pole, three feet from my driveway, 35 feet from my home. I'm going to mention a timeline for this installation. The AT&amp;T safety compliance certification was dated February 19, 2018. The pole was inspected by Brian Syrup, Public Works, on May 11, 2018. The pole was assigned on September 4, 2018. EWEB replaced the pole in January 2019, and the equipment was installed on February 20, 2019, a year span. I was never notified. I never saw any notification from the city on any of their websites that this was happening. I'm going to read from the city Eugene wireless telecommunications right-of-way policy. Although there are no specific codes, standards governing the height and appearance of telecommunications features in the public right-of-way, there are city council-adopted findings in telecommunications related to land use and right-of-way ordinances. As wireless technologies expand, it seems prudent to establish guidelines for future requests for wireless facilities located, co-located on structures in the public right-of-way. It's important to emphasize that these guidelines do not obligate the city, EWEB, or other right-of-way facilities users to accept requests, even if all guidelines are met. Location, in order to minimize impact to nearby residents, the following location factor shall be considered. Preference shall be given to poles or structures that are not in close proximity to residents. For example, poles immediately adjacent to front yard and within full view of single-family residents shall be discouraged. I can see that pole out of my bedroom window. ROWs along arterial and collector streets shall generally be encouraged over smaller local streets. So my question is, with a pole 200 feet directly south from this pole in front of my home, located at 1207 East 30th Avenue, adjacent to a parking lot on a arterial, why wasn't that pole considered for the cell tower? It appears to me that the city's making choices or recommendations and not following their guidelines. And recent studies have shown that property values can be reduced as much as 25%.
Thank you.
My last thing is, would any of you buy my house with the small cell junk on the pole? Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Geng, followed by Becky Bruckner.
Kathy Geng, Allen's Ward. After me, citizens will share important advice from Harry Lehman to policymakers and attorneys of Marin County, how to limit financial 5G litigation, financial risk. He is a California attorney. Is smart the new stupid? Fifth-generation communications for faster speed to what? Enable more game addicts? 30% of net uses for pornography and for autonomous vehicles, IoT, drones? AT&amp;T, one of four carriers applying in Eugene, installs include a dozen completed poles, 100-plus in process. 5G rollout will have severe health repercussions, doctors worldwide warn. Portland's Martin Paul, who spoke here, stated no rational leaders would allow 5G high-frequency, short-millimeter waves, 27 to 300 gigahertz pulsed microwave radiation, untested on human cells near homes and schools. Every third to seventh house, 500 feet, would contain radiation admitters. Insane, says Dr. Paul, whom I've been trying to get Lucy to call. 20-plus percent property devaluation predicted based on cell locations in other areas and probable tax-based decline could hurt bottom lines and health of unfortunates who own or live nearby. $2,700 for five gallons of special carbon black paint to shield your house, plus the other paint on top of that. Paul also warns that the biggest lie in scientific history is that non-ionizing radiation, like 3- to 4G powering Wi-Fi in schools, homes, and cell phones and TVs, does not harm human cells. Light-off dwindling bees, pollinators, birds, experts warn if 5G activated. Humans will be test guineas, large-scale experiments without full disclosure or express consent. A tragedy of the commons is that Eugene brought into this and allowed secrecy since 12, 2017, revealing 13 months later, in January 2019, its public map after citizen inquiries, including mine. Poles erected by AT&amp;T without notice the neighborhood groups, residents, media. Mayor Venice, early 19, said the 5G is not here yet, don't worry. Apparently, even she was uninformed. I alerted City Managers Office in November that Eugene could modify its cell ordinance by January but was ignored. I refer you to California towns who modified ordinances, no action here. When I was referred to a correct staff, it was too late for the January deadline, but it may still be possible to meet April 15 deadline, crafting criteria having to deal with aesthetics, which has no legal definition, insiders inform me. I no longer am allowed to talk with three staff regarding 5G. I can only email Brian Richardson, who admitted the buck stops there.
Thank you.
Is smart the real, the new stupid? Yes. And is really smart, really stupid? Yes.
Thank you. Becky Bruckner, sorry, followed by Charles Coxson.
Hi, my name is Becky Bruckner, Ward 3, homeowner in Eugene for 14 years. All of my family, four sons and six grandkids, live here, and that is why I'm here tonight. I am terrified to live in Eugene now, absolutely terrified, because 5G is being installed all over town without notice to the public or homeowners. 5G cells are being put right in front of people's front yards on utility poles without notice or explanation. I insist that the city council adopt an emergency moratorium on 5G permits and installations, including installations alleged as co-location. This will limit the scope of Eugene's financial risk for litigation. Yes, I said litigation. For me, this is a question of morality. It is immoral to irradiate people in order to sell them instant access to video streaming and faster data. You can't just roll out a new experimental type of technology that has no regulation or safety testing without people being informed, without people's informed consent, so they understand the risks and benefits. You would have to have the approval of entities that have examined the science to say it's safe. No one is measuring the radiation levels, and that is a problem. Credible science proves that cellular microwave breaks DNA. Our county is morally bound to resist 5G due to its direct impact on all of life. Eugene residents face immediate irreparable harm from 5G once activated. There is now overwhelming evidence of DNA and cellular damage from radio frequency EMS. Therefore, 5G's close proximity radiation source is dangerous under government code, I'm saying government code, 3835, which basically says that the city of Eugene had notice of the danger of 5G a sufficient time prior to injury to have taken measures. of the danger of 5G a sufficient time prior to injury to have taken measures to protect against the dangerous condition, namely 5G technology. Principal Attorney Harry Lehman, Marin County, California, states the following in his letter, which is directed to attorneys and policymakers in Marin, quote-unquote, "I suggest an additional lawful basis for rejection of 5G, which is not prohibited by the 1996 Telecom Act, namely that the installation of 5G, given the totality of circumstances, is immoral, and Marin elects not to allow 5G installation on moral grounds. Will telecom argue that morality no longer matters? And we certainly do have room in our laws for morality in the civil matters. It is called equity. I expect the city of Eugene to stand up and do the right thing and have a moratorium on 5G." That's what I expect.
Thank you. Charles Coxson, followed by Gwen Jaspers.
Hi, I'm Charles Coxson. I'm a resident here in Eugene, and I'm continuing with the Harry Lehman statement. This is the defense of separation of powers. It addresses the 1996 Telecommunications Reform Act, which acted to prevent reprisals of health against the telecommunications industry. And so he says, "Telecom relies here on the odious 1996 Telecommunications Reform Act, Section 704, which has been often interpreted by industry to prohibit the courts from even entertaining any claims based on adverse health consequences. This is a massive violation of the basic concept of separation of powers. This is defending the separation of powers between legislative and executive branch. The FCC claims that their Pet Act is so powerful that now the executive branch can preclude the courts from even having jurisdiction over any tower siting issues. Our system of courts has never been perfect and never will be perfect, but the courts are the safety net protecting us from the excesses of governance. It is extremely important that the issue of separation of powers, in this instance, the severe overreach of the federal executive branch, be fought in any litigation over 5G with telecom. I support an emergency moratorium on 5G." Thank you.
Gwen Jaspers, followed by Sabrina Siegel.
Hello, I'm Gwen Jaspers, and I live in Ward One. I, too, urgently call for an immediate moratorium on all applications, installations, et cetera, of 5G technology, including co-locations and new pole installations, until thorough national independently funded scientific studies reveal the full human and other environmental health effects of 5G technology. I'm going to continue with the letter that Attorney Lehman points out some less obvious defense approaches. Americans with Disabilities Act claims, "A prohibition of environmental claims does not preclude claims for direct physical harm to humans." The 1996 Telecommunications Act did not expressly prohibit claims for direct physical harm from microwave sources. Industry has sought to maintain that radiation must be ionizing or creating heat to cause injury. There is a robust literature showing that electromagnetic radiation causes physiological effects, injury, and cell death, not only in humans but many animals and plants. This includes non-ionizing frequencies, and at levels below those that cause thermal or heat effects. This non-ionizing radiation has sufficient power to tear apart live tissue, living tissue. Dr. Henry Lai's findings from the University of Washington School of Medicine proved that DNA strand is broken by exposing to cellular, by being exposed to cellular signals. An endless array of American with disabilities litigation will result if Eugene voluntarily enters into a joint venture for 5G with telecommunications companies. Please avoid that exposure. The percentage of us whom in the future will be electro-sensitive to the point of recognizable symptoms is, of course, unknown. The connection between this radiation and the symptoms of microwave exposure disease are well-established. The National Toxicology Program study found tumors and cancer in rats exposed to cellular phone radiation." Another point, another defense. The FCC is violating due process. It is waging a national condemnation campaign to seize property rights belonging to cities and counties, local districts, and other public and private entities. The term condemnation is used in the normal legal prescriptive sense of a public entity taking private property, the owner of that property being entitled to due process, to access the courts for reimbursement. The FCC is saying to all of us, "Skip the due process part," implying that even the judicial branch cannot stop this corporate-dictated irradiation of our population.
Thank you. Sabrina Siegel, followed by Jesse Hubie.
Hello, counsel. My name is Sabrina Siegel, and I'm in Allen's Ward. I'm going to continue with the Lehman letter. It's really an incredible letter, and we are submitting it to you, and you could read it carefully. But before I start, I was charged with reading this part from Beatrice Alexandra Gollum, M.D., Ph.D., Professor of Medicine from UC San Diego School of Medicine. And I'll read some sections from it, but it's been submitted to you. You could read the whole thing. But I'm going to start by telling you that I'm one of the people that she's mentioned in her letter, not specifically, but I have electromagnetic sensitivity. And there are several people I know here in Eugene that also have it. And it's a challenge for me to even come downtown, even with the cellular that already exists here and the Wi-Fi that you have here. It's not common knowledge, right? But it's in the data and attached to, about the dangers to health. And attached here to Beatrice's letter are 360 studies that show the relationship between these frequencies to DNA, DNA damage, DNA strand damage, and cellular death and damage. And my, I have this, and it's not fun. And if you go ahead with the 5G, probably most people will have what I have. And really, when it first started, it was like an earthquake going off in my brain. And it's like you have to walk through this earthquake. Your brain feels like it's jiggling and nerves twitching and loss, you know, almost like Alzheimer's, like a loss of the continuity of consciousness. And now I'm taking about 60 supplements a day, naturally, thank God, to deal with it, to be able to live in the city and be normal, but I really should be in the country like other people that I know that have what I have, and it would be easier for me. But anyway, just to tell you that this is real, and people are suffering really greatly with already what exists, you know, with the 4G and the Wi-Fi. But anyway, it says, I'll just read some sections, "Many people will suffer greatly and needlessly as a result if 5G is activated." There's a lot of studies that she cites. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Jesse Hubie, followed by Victor Odlavec.
Hi there, my name is Jesse Hubie, and I reside in Ward One. As a 21-year-old who has been raised in this community, I feel very worried and passionately about the issue and threat of 5G in this community and its deployment across the world. I, too, therefore, call for immediate moratoriums on installations having to do with 5G technology, including co-locations. In order to understand the potentially tragic effect of 5G, I think it is important to take into consideration the evidence and science of the effects of already prominent technology and cell towers, as well as specific communities who have been and will be adversely affected, such as other able communities members. I'm also charged with reading some of Lehman's letter. Firefighters in California have experienced firsthand the detrimental effects of constant concentrated cell tower radiation. The California Legislature granted an exemption to firefighters who accrested it for health reasons. Firefighters have long complained of often disabling symptoms from cell towers on their stations. Symptoms experienced by firefighters have included neurological impairment, including severe headache, confusion, inability to focus, lethargy, inability to sleep, and inability to wake up for 911 emergency calls. Firefighters have reported getting lost on 911 calls in the same community they grew up in. And one veteran medic forgot where he was in the midst of basic CPR on a cardiac victim and couldn't recall how to start the procedure over again. A pilot study of California firefighters showed brain abnormalities, cognitive impairment, delayed reaction time, and lack of impulse control in all six firefighters tested. This study led to an overwhelming passage of Resolution 15 by the International Association of Firefighters in Boston in August 2004. Resolution 15 called for a further study and was amended to impose a moratorium on the placement of cell towers on fire stations throughout the U.S. and Canada. Clearly, others who experience similar problems also deserve protections. If 5G technology is activated in this community, it will be an egregious violation of everyone's right to determine their own health and wellness. 5G applied to light poles all over our neighborhoods will be impossible to avoid, causing our citizens to suffer dramatically from sustained exposure to intense radiation. 5G in our community would put the ecology of Eugene as a whole in peril, as birds, insects, and all life would be severely harmed by this more intense form of inescapable radiation. Please do whatever you can to disallow this unnecessary tech from being deployed by tech companies who frankly are solely focused on their profits. Much like the crisis of global warming, the advancement of dangerous technologies such as 5G put everything and everyone we love at risk, and it is vital that we protect ourselves, the world, the natural world in which we are part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Odlavec, followed by Colin Farnsworth.
My name is Victor Odlavec. I'm at 1620 Lorraine Highway, right at the top there. We demand an immediate moratorium on 5G based on moral and health grounds. I am reading again from the letter summarizing it from Attorney Lehman. There's been an argument that we need to have 5G because the 4G is not good enough. Well, you know, actually, the 5G is really poor because it only goes five blocks. And so it's so poor that we have to have it every five, six blocks, north, south, west, or east. And it's such a high energy that we're radiating ourselves. So instead of just going up to 2.1 gigahertz, which we currently have with our current 4G technology of the cellphone, we're going from 3 gigahertz to 78 gigahertz. And 5G actually goes all the way up to 300 gigahertz. Who knows how long it will be before it's that high? But if you take 78 and you divide it by 2.1, you get about 36, 37 times as much energy. And the real great, great danger, as has already been emphasized, especially for children, it's up at that school, it's at the Roosevelt Middle School on 19th and Patterson, it's up at Sundance on 24th and Hilliard, where there are lots of people shopping with their children, and it just absolutely has to stop. Dr. Paul Dart was here. If you go to the website, Families for Safe Meters, you click on Issues, you click on Health, you can see Dr. Ted Litovitz testified in 2000 about the danger of Wi-Fi and wireless. This is really dangerous stuff. He is the person who invented vitrification to put those radioactive uranium and plutonium and then buried in the ground. So he's a very respected person. And also, this is going to impact people who are poor a lot more. People in high-density housing, they're going to be a lot more exposed. The people up at the top of Lorraine Highway, you know, our houses are separated by a third of an acre. And again, this is just really, really bad. It's a huge hazard to our health. Lastly, you have to remember the death of the Secretary of State of gileoblastoma. That's from the cellphone, from holding it on your ear. He died of that. How many more people do we want to die?
Thank you. Thank you. Colin Farnsworth, followed by Loretta Houston.
Hey, I'm Colin Farnsworth. I'm a resident here in Eugene. I appreciate y'all opening the mic for us tonight. I'm also speaking on the behalf of this 5G concerns. Portland just, there was an article that just came out that said, "The Portland City Council will be voting on a resolution this Wednesday for an emergency moratorium on the rollout of 5G." It has been introduced by Mayor Ted Wheeler. And what the wireless companies are saying is that they're going to need 300,000 new high-intensity antennas to compensate for this intense 5G. And this is mainly for the purpose of, you know, quick downloads and the infrastructure for autonomous vehicles. And in 2017, 180 scientists and doctors from countries around Europe appealed the European Commission recommending a moratorium on the rollout of 5G until the potential hazards have been fully investigated. The safety standards currently under, from the FCC for radio frequency exposure are based on studies conducted primarily in the 1990s. So as you can imagine, our dependency and exposure to radio frequency has significantly increased since the 1990s. Additionally, as mentioned before, this exposure is drastically, significantly, it occurs more to people living in apartment buildings in high-density areas, oftentimes inflicting upon poor residents than others. Also, dealing with issues of federal preemption with this issue, which is probably a key concern, that the 1996 Telecommunications Reform Act, its preemption provisions mainly covered the potential, the personal communication devices only, and clearly, this goes well beyond that intent. So it goes beyond the legislative intent for the Telecommunications Reform Act. And so I think there is an opportunity to stop it locally and end the federal preemption. Also, there's also some, probably some, you know, Fifth Amendment concerns in terms of, you know, we have, these are our property rights. They're using our towers to implement these 5G rollouts. And so what we want you to do is, we want you to sign, to the very least, this resolution and get to also do an emergency moratorium on this 5G. And there's a huge national pushback against this, and we want you to at least join that and so we can stop this until there is better health studies done on it. And then finally, you know, Americans are, Americans are just tired of sacrificing our health, safety, and local control in the name of corporate convenience and efficiency. And so we want you, as our Democratic representatives, to speak out against this, because I don't see a huge line of people here saying, "Yes, we need this 5G." It's the exact opposite. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Loretta Houston, followed by Ron Breeden.
Loretta Houston, in Emily's Ward. I'd like to emphasize that during these modern times, we tend to lose perspective and normalize extreme and excessive shifts that are forced into our lives without assessing the real consequences that come with non-transparent, profit-driven industries pushing their business model on the masses. Here's another preeminent example of a multi-trillion-dollar telecom industry rigging the laws to protect and give full rights without any due process within this so-called democratic nation. Once 5G is rolled out and integrated into other systems, it simply is too late to protect our biological systems and our national and international securities. As was stated through Attorney Lehman's letter in Marin County, the most wise course of action to take is to avoid ongoing lawsuits from the public, is to immediately adopt an emergency moratorium on 5G permits and installations. Like Colin just said, the good news is, we just received, it was in the Oregonian, that Ted Wheeler is pushing across the nation for cities Ted Wheeler is pushing across the nation for cities and municipalities to join on with this resolution. And it's in the Telecommunications Act Number 704, which they have implemented to actually exempt anything to do with health issues because they know they will be sued. So they're, you know, of course, they've used their lobbying power to get this passed under Clinton in 1996, well ahead of time, so that they can trump the states, they can trump the cities and our municipalities. And this form of government, which is very top-heavy, we've got to stand up to it because we are the people that live within our communities. We are the ones that are affected by corporate power, corporate takeover. And we ask our city council, and we are going to reach out to E-Web More and the county, to stand with us because all of us will be affected by this. No one's going to be exempt. Radiation is accumulative. We are, there's the solar radiation, there's, and then there's the ionizing radiation when people get X-rays. I mean, this is, there's more cancer in today's world than there's ever been. So we ask you to sign up with this, immediately take action on this moratorium and to join with other cities to sign this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Breeden, followed by John Amundson.
Power to the people, all of the people. I asked a friend about this meeting, about what I'd say, what I should say. He said, what do you want to say? Well, I said, I wanted to explain the financial difficulties imposed on certain income groups by excessive tax measures, bond measures, levies, fee increases, all that sort of thing. All these taxes are really regressive. They consequently corrode the disposable income of those on stagnant wages, fixed incomes, and even those making 20 bucks an hour. Excessive taxation corrodes and depletes our power to purchase. But he said, I got to be simple and direct, simple and direct. So, simple and direct is, I think we're being screwed. I think we're being screwed royally by all of the tax systems. The tax systems at the city level, the county level, state level, they're all up here, they're all bundled together, they all roll downhill, and who do you think is at the bottom? It's not the people that make the taxes. It's people on fixed incomes, stagnant wages, and those who are making 20 bucks an hour. Now, I don't know what the remedy is, but I'm thinking that the city, at least at our level here, oh, sorry, I live in Eugene in Ward 7. I think the city has got a little money to spare. I noticed $84,000 went somewhere to tell us that there's a homeless problem in Eugene. And I don't want to suggest that the city council is becoming a kind of an inverse Robin Hood. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that they're robbing the poor and giving it to the rich. I wouldn't say that because Mr. Obi got a $4.3 million tax break, and the city council is considering a payroll tax on poor guys making 20 bucks an hour or less. So I don't really know what the remedy is. I think there's tax resistance taking place in this country. I know it's taking place in France. There's a yellow vest movement taking place across the world. It's in at least 22 countries. It's a little dicey in Iraq because if you wear a yellow vest there, the government uses live rounds. So I would like the, as a matter of fact, oops, I wanted to say one thing quickly. There is a person in this audience who is being property taxed out of the home that that person lives in. So those are the people I think need more consideration from the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Amundson, followed by Alyssa Gilbert.
Mayor Viness, City Council, my name is John Amundson, and I'm a fellow with Environment Oregon. And along with Osberg students over the last six months or so, I've been working and organizing to encourage you guys to take action on plastic pollution and in particular, ban polystyrene takeout containers. I listened to Michael's testimony earlier, and I definitely appreciate how hard it is to find the best way forward when it comes to plastic pollution. But I really wanted to commend you for moving forward with the three recommendations from city staff, especially the ban on polystyrene. I think that regardless of how things shake out on the statewide level when it comes to plastic, these are common sense measures that go a long way towards reestablishing Eugene as a leader on the issue of plastic pollution, as Counselor Semple alluded to earlier. These measures won't solve the problem, they won't do everything, but they are effective and meaningful measures and an important step forward for our waterways and wildlife. So I just wanted to say thank you for listening to the community and leading on this important issue, and I'm really looking forward to conversations continuing throughout the spring and into the future. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alyssa Gilbert, followed by Elizabeth Radcliffe.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Gilbert. I am the Osberg Students' Chapter Chair at the University of Oregon. We're a student-run nonprofit. We've been doing a lot of work this term around single-use plastics, specifically the polystyrene ban. We have done a lot of things to really get the community active around this issue, such as getting student petition signatures, getting a lot of local restaurants to sign on saying that this won't negatively affect their business, and they appreciate this too. So I did want to also thank you all so much for putting in the time and work that it really takes to make something like this happen. So thank you so much for that. I don't think it's a surprise to any of us that plastic pollution is a big problem. Polystyrene is kind of the worst of the worst, just because it will never break down, becomes microplastics in our oceans and waterways. It's in everything that we eat, all of the water we drink, and all of our bodies, in the bodies of sea animals, namely sea turtles. And so really banning it as opposed to just continuing to try to clean it up and still polluting our oceans is kind of our best bet and only option here, I think. A lot of other people have already been working on this around the world and even in the U.S. Portland has had the polystyrene ban for years now, so they're a really great example. Like I was saying earlier, we've talked to a lot of small businesses and restaurants in the community and have seen a lot of really broad support. I personally canvassed on this over the summer with Environment Oregon, so I talked to hundreds of Eugene natives and just heard how much they care about this and are passionate about this and want to see this happen. And I've also seen hundreds of students on campus get really excited about wanting to work with us and work on the issue as well. So I just think that it's really exciting that you guys are all taking action on this and we're able to start making a big impact where it's really necessary. So thank you all so much again.
Thank you. Elizabeth Radcliffe, followed by Eliza Koschinsky.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth. I'm the Vice Chair for Osberg. I'm a sophomore at UVO. Just wanted to also thank you guys again so much for taking action and really taking that really vital step that we've all been working toward and hopefully that will encourage Oregon as a whole to pass a similar ban on polystyrene as well as other single-use plastics. Obviously, we know that for the past several decades, we've been really just destroying our environment with our obsession for just what's really quick and really easy. We've been polluting all of our landfills and our oceans and wildlife with all these single-use plastics that we use for five minutes, and they persist in our environment for hundreds of years and really just destroy our ecosystems. So we've just been kind of tossing it aside and not thinking about the consequences. And unfortunately, we're really starting to see those consequences now. So it's really important that we start to take action, and we're really glad that we're starting to do that. So yeah, and we, as Osberg, we've been doing a lot of work on campus to show community support as well as support from Oregon's youth, which is really important because we're the ones who are going to be dealing with the consequences of all the plastic pollution. So over the past 10 weeks, we've gotten over 1,400 petitions from students on campus in support of that polystyrene ban. We also held an event last week where we encouraged over 100 students to integrate more sustainable practices into their lives, using reusable containers instead of single-use plastics like polystyrene. And obviously, we know that there is community support as well. Those events were covered by, or that event was covered by KVAL. And then we also did a river cleanup at the beginning of the term where we picked up a lot of styrofoam around Alton Beaker Park, and that was covered by the Register Guard, which is really cool. So yeah, we just really want to thank you again for listening to the community and all of the young people in Eugene who have really been pushing for this ban on single-use plastics. And we hope that this step is going to lead to even more important bans being made in the state of Oregon and on other kinds of single-use plastics. So thanks.
Thank you. Eliza Koschinsky, followed by Joshua Corn.
Hello, I'm Eliza Koschinsky, and I live in the Jefferson West Side neighborhood in Ward 1. I watched your ADU work session a couple of weeks ago, and I watched your work session on House Bill 2001 last week. I've heard you each talk about the housing crisis we're facing in Eugene. Last week, you mentioned several times that Eugene is the second-largest city in Oregon. That comes with a responsibility to be on the forefront of figuring out how we solve the housing crisis, to work to implement progressive new ideas, not just cling to past systems that clearly aren't working. We can't just sit back and hold work sessions and run community engagement processes that don't produce action or change. Eugene has a job to do. Eugene is dragging its feet. We've been talking about how to create more housing on key transit corridors for decades. We've been trying to update our comprehensive plan to figure out how to provide the housing we need for 12 years, 12 years, and it still isn't done. Other cities in Oregon are stepping up. When it came to removing barriers to ADUs, most other cities got it done. The state didn't have to tell them that owner occupancy requirements aren't reasonable because they did the work themselves. We are clinging to the roadblocks, talking about what barriers we can legally keep instead of what we can do to help make housing more possible. I know that this is hard. I know that you're being asked to make tough decisions with insufficient information and no promises about if it's going to work. But you know what? Our unhoused, our low-income residents, our renters who are being evicted are having to figure out what to do next without a lot of good options. Our retirees looking to downsize, our families committed to car-light lifestyles, our college students, our young adults looking for their first homes are making tough decisions about housing every day. And I can tell you, House Bill 2001 isn't just about Portland. It's about the fact that the city of Eugene, the second-largest city in Oregon, the city that has one of the greatest responsibilities to help figure out how to solve this problem, is abdicating its responsibility. House Bill 2001 has many flaws, but if this council doesn't want Salem to dictate how to solve our housing crisis, the answer isn't to just say no. We elected you to make tough and sometimes unpopular decisions. If you want the state to stay out, then do your jobs and start taking real actions that are going to solve the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Corn, followed by Betsy Hits.
I'm Joshua Corn, resident of Southwest Eugene, and yeah, thank you for hearing us out, Mayor Viness and City Council, on this 5G issue. You've heard a lot of different angles on this technology, and I want to present a different one because I think it's an important aspect to keep in mind. The, both law enforcement and the military have largely abandoned a very similar technology called Active Denial System, which was used for crowd control because of health and safety concerns. It's a technology that was designed to literally heat the outer layer of the skin using millimeter waves and literally causes people to flee instantly because they feel like their skin is on fire. And this is the kind of technology that's being proposed to be used throughout the general public, close to people's homes, and it's, like other people have stated, it's likely to cause a lot of litigation because of the safety concerns. And there have been no safety, health and safety testing on pulsed millimeter waves. When asked this in the literature, the responses that are quoted usually quote "millimeter wave" technology that is not pulsed. All of 5G technology uses pulsed millimeter waves, and the pulses are very important because they are the information that's being carried on the millimeter wave carrier wave. Without the pulse, the technology doesn't work, it doesn't carry a signal. And so all of it is pulsed millimeter wave technology, and that's why I urge you to enact this emergency moratorium and also join in this resolution that Portland is taking part in to stop the 5G rollout and stop any sites, including colocation and any small-cell And yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Hits, followed by Linda Perrine.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Hits. I live in Ward 1, and I'm a volunteer with 350 Eugene. I'm speaking tonight in support of a swift transition to electric vehicles, or EVs. Though our climate action plan has yet to be finalized, we can move forward on this now. I will remind you that one of the greatest impact strategies for closing the gap on meeting our climate recovery ordinance goals is greater reduction of fossil fuels via replacing a larger number of internal combustion engine vehicles with EVs. Many Eugene citizens are eligible for two or more financial incentives, which help bring the cost of an EV closer to that of an internal combustion engine vehicle. Currently, EVs are more expensive due to the cost of manufacturing the battery, though equal price is expected within a year or two. In essence, the need for incentives is limited to a few years. I think these short-term incentives should be maximally used to push beyond early adoption to mainstream use. The first and largest incentive is the federal tax credit for all plug-in vehicles, and the amount is up to 7,500. Unfortunately, each EV brand has a limit of 200,000 EVs sold that are eligible. I would like to see this limit removed. The second incentive is the Oregon Clean Vehicle Rebate. There are two, 2,500 for anyone purchasing a new EV and an additional 2,500 charge-ahead rebate for the purchase or lease of a new or used battery EV for those with low and moderate income. The third incentive is E-Web's Clean Ride Rebate for new or used purchased or leased battery EVs or plug-in hybrids. The purpose of the $300 rebate is to pay for electric fuel or to help offset the cost of a home charging station. That's a lot of information. I'm going to send it to you in an email version, but right now, my cohort is going to continue with this topic, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Linda Perrine, followed by Stefan Struck.
Good evening. I'm Linda Perrine. I'm also a volunteer with 350 Eugene, and I live in the 97405 Eugene zip code. I wanted to start tonight by updating you on the worldwide measurements of CO2. In February of 2019, the global CO2 levels were at 411 parts per million. In March, one month later, it's up to 413 parts per million. Not only is it going in the wrong direction... Not only is it going in the wrong direction, it is going at a faster pace. Tonight, we're bringing the subject of EVs to you. I wanted to focus on charging infrastructure. And just to get everybody on the same page, EVs can be charged in three manners. One is a standard 110 AC outlet. Second one is a 220-volt typical dryer plug for an electrical clothes dryer. And the third is DC fast charging. DC fast charging is able to charge EVs five to 30 times faster than either of the other two options. And currently, there's not a single DC fast charge outlet in Eugene whatsoever. There's a couple out on I-5, but none in the city of Eugene. EV owners are already aware that there's not enough EV charging stations in the city. Those that own the cars are challenged to find places in downtown to charge while they're at work or while they're shopping. And then, one of the things 350 Eugene is trying to determine, as we're doing all this exploratory work, is who is the appropriate organization to figure out where the charging stations should be located around Eugene. Obviously, they should be on main transit corridors and near shopping areas so people can do things while they're charging their car. But we can't determine if it's the city's job, or EWEB's job, or whose job it is to try to organize where the charging stations should go. So we're going to put forward our own proposal shortly. A few other ideas come from our climate hero, Matt McCray. Since EWEB has a business need to increase electricity use, EWEB could be encouraging adoption of EVs by: 1. Installing slow chargers on streetlights and fast chargers in shopping areas on major transit corridors; 2. adopting time-of-use pricing that lowers price-cost of charging when electricity is plentiful; 3. providing low-interest loans for EV purchases; and 4. continuing and increasing the cash incentives. Another interesting idea comes out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Owners of EVs there and hybrids in that city can display a decal on their car, which gives them free parking. This can also be seen as a disincentive to purchase internal combustion engine vehicles. In closing, I urge the mayor, the councilors and staff, and all citizens to support the transition away from gasoline-engine vehicles and towards EVs, support extension of the federal tax credit, better yet, a rebate, and removal of the limit of credits given. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Struck, followed by Tom Kwakking.
All right. Good day, everybody. Thank you very much for coming down here and braving the weather to represent the greatest voters in the world, the people of Eugene, Oregon. My name is Stefan Struck, and I'm here today to talk about my friend, who is an immigrant, elderly minority, who loves this country, owns a local business, and has worked hard in this community for the past 40 years to house people. But first, I'd like to prove that things can be solved pretty quickly. Now, I hear a lot about this global warming thing all my life. People keep saying, "global warming this, global warming that." There was some jerk named Al Gore who thought he could, like, talk on TV about it. I have this snowball, and I didn't have to go very far to get it. It was right outside. There's herds of them roaming the city for weeks now. It's ridiculous. It's not getting that much hotter. I mean, the way Al Gore was talking, all the snow would be gone like 20 years ago. We got more of it than ever before. So the problem is that liberals can't open their eyes and recognize the real problems in society, like people dying on the streets because they're being covered in snow while their politicians talk about this global warming myth over the rainbow. And I'm sick of hearing about it. Now, my friend, Mr. Tom, is a great American. He's not just an immigrant minority. He works hard to help everybody. Now, unfortunately, this city hasn't been listening to him. I don't know if anyone here speaks Chinese. It's a real question I'm asking. I'll take that as a no. But I can understand Tom pretty well. I'm not an expert at Chinese, but I'm learning a little bit, and I learn pretty fast what I do. Now, this man has been discriminated against. He's worked to help people, veterans, homeless people. And he hasn't been communicated with property. You know, that's racism, to not speak to him in a language he understands. That's discrimination, to say, "just because you're an elderly person, we're not going to listen to you because you don't speak English so good. We're just going to push your property around and disrespect your rights." That's the way lesbian liberals talk, and I'm sick of hearing it, just like I'm sick of hearing about this global warming myth. Now, it doesn't take that much effort to just listen to someone about what the problem is and what you can do to help them. I've done it my whole life. And that's how I meet great people like Mr. Tom over here, who love paying taxes. He's paid taxes for 40 years on property he owns, and you don't even have the respect to speak with him? You can't look him in the eye? Please. Work harder for all people, and thank you very much for your time. God bless America. Now, my friend Tom.
Thank you. Tom Kwakking, followed by Jim Ball.
Yeah. I have a problem with the city. I probably did not understand what I'm talking about. I'm sorry. Let me, because I tried to make an appointment with the city for many, many years, but now they still don't have answer. The problem, the city of Plenton Department, they misunderstood the law. They discrimination for the housing, federal law, unfair. They just come to my apartment, kick the door open, and they take a picture. And those, in spite of, they don't have education. They don't have license for the electrical. They don't have license for health. They don't have license at all. They're not trained. So how can they know everything? They just punch that, that, that. That's all they do. I think it's illegal, and they misunderstood the law. But I tried to talk to the city, send a letter for the mayor, letters to mayor for August 24/16, but until, no answer at all. Either they in relegation, they don't know what they're doing. They say, the guy said, "I just be here two months." And then I go to the city, talk to the mayor, their secretary say, "I just be do the part-time job." I am not understand why they discrimination for me and discrimination for all my tennis disability because they are mental. They just kick on the parking lot. That's all they do with our home, with our social worker, with our any help. And they go to inspection for all my house without reason. That's all they think, they more than turn the page. Okay, please go looking for the city of Eugene Plenton Department. What they doing? They planning to take my property because EMS over there, they don't want the low-income people hang around on the 7 on Monroe Street. They try to take my whole property. You see, this all, the violation for the city. If I'm not let him in, they say...
10 seconds, Tom. 10 seconds.
Okay. They will be cut my power, power and water. They force me, but they cannot find us around. Thank you. I will be happy to make the appointment if anyone can help.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Tom, sorry, Jim Ball, followed by Timothy Morris.
I'm Jim Ball. I live in Ward 2, and I'd like to thank you all for listening. You have a lot of issues to keep track of, and I'd like to talk a little bit about climate, and it's probably going to be a little lighter than some of the other things we've talked about tonight. If this yardstick represents global greenhouse gas emissions, then these lengths of colored tape are the different countries' portions of total global emissions: China, United States, European Union, et cetera. United States is about six inches. Oregon, Oregon's portion of the United States is about the thickness of a quarter. And Eugene's portion of this whole emissions, global emissions, is less than the thickness of a piece of paper. So the point that I'd like to make is not that, you know, it's not an important issue that we should do something about, but that local responses to climate are pretty limited, and so we have to be pretty smart about what we do. And I don't think we should tell our children that we're going to save them from climate change. I think that's an unfair and misleading thing to present to our children. And we're already suffering the effects. They're going to get worse. We have to do something, but the something that we have to do involves trade-offs. Local action needs to strike a balance between preventing and adapting to climate emergencies. Prevention generally raises the cost of energy, while at the same time, adapting generally requires access to affordable energy. So they're sort of at odds with each other. As an example, people need low electric rates to be able to use air conditioning during smoke and heat emergencies, which are becoming increasingly common. So I see our job as making smart choices given limited options. I was very encouraged at the recent work session with EWEB when Frank Lawson talked about smart and less smart electrification. And I really hear what he was saying reflected in some of the testimony tonight from the 350 Eugene folks. Smart electrification can happen immediately, aggressively switching cars to electricity. But less smart electrification would suggest that we continue using natural gas in buildings to give us time to build more low-carbon energy sources. This strategy would make immediate progress toward greenhouse gas emission reductions without denying our children access to affordable energy, which they're going to need to deal with climate emergencies in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Timothy Morris, followed by Linda Heil.
Good evening, council. My name is Timothy Morris, and I live in Ward 1. I come to you as a board member of a local organization, and we are called the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association. We have created a service-based hotline here in the local area for renters and tenants to be able to call in and ask questions, or have concerns, or talk about evictions, things like that, that are really pressing. And while I am excited to bring this hotline to the community, I'm bothered that the city of Eugene doesn't seem to be doing much for renters here in our area. According to the Housing Tools and Strategies Survey, out of 661 participants in the survey, 450 of those said the number-one issue that they face is that the rent is too high. That's over half of the people that participated. Our neighbors, your constituents, our renters, over 51% of Eugene is renters. There is little representation of renters' rights, however. Even the Housing Tools and Strategies consisted only of 11% of renters. So out of these 51% of Eugene citizens that are renters, over a third are rent burden, which means that they pay over 30% of their income just to rent. That's not including utilities, not including parking, just to rent. That also means that our people, our neighbors, our community are making impossible decisions. Do I pay for rent, or do I pay for food? Medicine or utilities? I'm a person that has made these decisions. According to the American Census, excuse me, the American Community Service, which is ACS, in order to keep up with the new incoming residents here in Lane County, we have to have 1,600 new units annually. Last year, up to September of 2018, we built 906. We're not close. These numbers also don't include the people in Eugene that are currently living here now. That's just new incoming people. The point of me being here and with Springfield Eugene Tenant Association, with SADA, we support the CET at its full 1% or more, if you'd like, in order to give our neighbors more of an opportunity. And just as a note for my community, any member here that is interested in learning more, I have sign-in sheets. Maslow's hierarchy of needs is that shelter is at the very bottom. That means that food, water, and shelter is the number-one need that people need, and so much depends on this. This Wednesday, you'll be voting on the CET that will drastically affect the majority of citizens here in Eugene. I urge you to vote to implement the CET and continue to support renters and tenants here in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Heil, followed by Ryan Moore.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Linda Heil, and I live in Ward 2. During the Budget Committee's recent discussion about the CIP, I was glad to hear members request trend data regarding various aspects. Trends are included but are not highlighted in the 2017 greenhouse gas inventory that is now published, so I'd like to point out some of these trends. This report states a key finding that total sector-based emissions in 2017 are 4% lower than in 2010. Sounds like this is progress, but unfortunately, it is not. And that's because in 2015, the inventory showed emissions at 14% below 2010 levels. So in those two years, emissions rose substantially. To find this trend, look at Figure 8, Total Market Emissions, and you will see that the emissions are trending downward until the recent increase of about 10% over the past two years. Secondly, note that refrigerants are more of a problem than previously thought, as these data have been revised upwards, significantly increasing their contribution to the total. And finally, please note the very large increases in emissions from natural gas. Between 2015 and 2017, emissions from gas increased by about 40,000 metric tons, or 16%. Gas accounted for 25% of all emissions in 2015 and accounts for 28% of all emissions in 2017. Emissions from electricity have continued to decline and now account for only about 2.5% of total emissions. Remember that EWEB serves many more customers than Northwest Natural, about 80,000 versus about 30,000. Let's consider those numbers once again. Northwest Natural produces 28% of all Eugene's sector-based emissions, and EWEB produces 2.5%. These data underscore council's very heavy responsibility as it plugs the gaps for our climate action plan. Ways to regulate Northwest Natural's emissions are front and center in those discussions for good reason. The CRO goals cannot be reached without addressing gas. Transportation fuels are another big piece of the pie, so electrification of transportation and big increases in walking and biking and public transit trips are also needed. Reducing emissions from both natural gas and transportation fuels holds the key. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Moore, followed by Josh Caraco.
Hello, Mayor Vinis and City Council. Thanks for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Ryan Moore. I live in Councilor Pryor's Ward now. I moved. I am a member of your Budget Committee. I also am on the boards of several local nonprofits, one of them being Springfield Eugene Tenant Association, which you heard from earlier. I'm here to talk a bit about what I think is sort of an elephant in the room, and that is the power dichotomy between property owners and tenants in our area. 51% of Eugene residents are renters. I'm going to say it again because it's really important. 51% of Eugene residents are renters. And yet, the makeup of our city government does largely not reflect that. And one prominent example can be found in our neighborhood association structures. Those, by and large, are comprised of property owners with little to no representation of tenants. And yet, they speak loudly with a clear voice, as if they represent their entire communities. I'm sure you're all very well aware of that. Frankly, I'm not here to complain about any citizen wanting to exert their voice on city government. I think it's admirable. That's what democracy is all about. What I think we do need to be mindful of is the imbalance of representation. 51% of Eugene residents are renters. So this is a structural problem. What I think we do need to be mindful of is the imbalance of representation. 51% of Eugene residents are renters. So this is a structural problem. You have a chance to directly impact this structural problem this Wednesday, when you take up for discussion the result of the Housing Tools and Strategies Workshop, one of those being, and Mike, I see you smiling there, one of those being the construction excise tax. Now, construction excise tax, preferably in the amount of more than 1%, although I know that's not likely, with the funds dedicated to affordable housing, would be a tremendous boon to the 51% of Eugene residents that are renters. The solution to the housing crisis is to increase the supply of housing. Not only that, we have to increase the supply in the right way. So again, on Wednesday, I urge you to strongly consider and implement, at the soonest possibility, possible time, construction excise tax, among the other 79 recommendations of the Housing Tools and Strategies Workshop. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Josh Karako, followed by Daniel Ivey.
Joshua Karako, Ward One. I wear a lot of different hats. Sometimes I actually help out with SADA. But I also am on the Renters Protection Task Team for the Housing Policy Board. That is the other presentation you're getting some results from on Wednesday before you talk about Housing Tools and Strategies. And sometimes I talk fast. Three minutes is good. And I just want to urge you to take that seriously as well. And I'd be really disappointed if you didn't allow staff, Stephanie's going to have a great presentation, to just, and Housing Policy Board, to come to you with some more recommendations, as we went out and talked. Actually, I want to thank Lucy for actually being at one of those renters' listening sessions, and I wanted to thank Claire also, who was at the Whitaker one, but she's not here. And, but we have a lot of ideas that could help tenants now fill in some of the gaps in SB 608 and some other things. I don't want to step on staff's feet before you've given us instruction, really, but there are a lot of things we can do for tenants now. Further, though, I do not, I think we need to keep in mind the kind of the, I guess it's been described as like a three-pronged strategy for addressing needs in this state for housing, and one is taking away barriers to building more market-rate housing, but affordable kinds of market-rate housing. I was really disappointed by the discussion regarding SHB 2001. Could get into that if I have time. The other one is giving more money for affordable housing, and that would be, you know, something like a CET could help for that. That's what's one place we can do that. And the other is renter protections. And renters, I think it actually may be 54%. I'm not positive on the number. Stephanie probably has that number. You can probably ask her on Wednesday. One of the recommendations you actually approved of as an administrative fix for staff to go forward was this strange thing that said, make, this is in response to something Ryan just said, sorry. He said, make neighborhood associations more representative of their populations. That was something we agreed on, but we didn't put any teeth behind that. I want to take off my hat because I also don't speak for the Housing Policy Board or that task team. That should be clear. I just, I helped write that survey that you're getting results from, so it means a lot to me. And I've been talking to renters all around the city, and I think it's important to remember that anyway, that building and protecting renters and getting money are not, a lot of people will tell you that one goal is more important than another, and that, and I actually believe we won't solve the problem without all of those goals. And I talked a lot. So I'm just going to leave my time there, and I'd love to talk to you more, but thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Ivey, followed by Donna Riddle.
Hello. My name is Daniel Ivey. I live in Ward Four. I currently serve on the Lane County Housing Policy Board, but today I come to you as just a concerned citizen. For too long, the efforts of city staff, elected officials, and local housing developers have been stymied by the actions of a handful of NIMBYs, and we need to work together to put a stop to this. For the benefit of those in attendance who may not know, NIMBY stands for "Not in My Backyard." As a result of their actions, we have housing and building codes in place that are putting a stranglehold on our ability to infill our city with mixed housing typologies and a backlog of petitions and appeals for city staff to deal with whenever there is even the hint of a project on the horizon. To help this, to help support these efforts, we've come together to form a political action group called YIMBY Eugene Springfield. The acronym stands for Yes. Yes in My Backyard. We've been in communication with the founders of the YIMBY movement and have taken their counsel and methodologies for combating the NIMBY mindset in our town. To that end, tonight marks our first call to action. We want to make our voices heard in support of the findings and recommendations of the Housing Tools and Strategies Work Group. Keep in mind that even though this group has been very productive, many of these efforts were complicated by a few NIMBYs who stubbornly voted to, voted no to almost every proposal for positive change that was brought forward. Thankfully, the organizers had the foresight to include a diverse array of community representatives to balance those negative opinions. You originally deliberated on 1210 and 1212 regarding the HTS findings, and you'll be doing so again in two short days. I'm sure you're doing your homework and reading up on the recommendations so that you'll soon be prepared to vote. I want to implore you to try to make something actionable come out of this work session so that we can begin to see housing become more affordable in our great city, specifically with regards to passing of a construction excise tax and lifting code restrictions for building of accessory dwelling units. I've watched the previous city council meetings and work groups, and my takeaway for you is that although careful deliberation and compromise are important, we need more swift and decisive action on the issue of housing affordability from this governing body. I am a homeowner, but I am also a YIMBY. I'm a YIMBY because my heart is heavy with the fact that we have the resources to put a roof over everyone's head, and yet somehow we can't. I'm a YIMBY because I want to live in a world where diversity, both economic and cultural, is prioritized rather than feared. I'm a YIMBY because the world is not just, but we are. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Donna Riddle, followed by Dallas Smith.
I'm glad to see all of you here, and I appreciate all your work. I'm Donna Riddle. I live in Springfield, Oregon. I have a couple of different things I'd like to say. You know, last, I don't know, last fall, late fall, I got very excited because I heard talk of a navigation center and a day center for people who were without housing that would be downtown, which could benefit both the business owners and the people who don't have housing, because they would have a place to be where they could get help, that would be local, located near transportation. I don't understand why the old downtown LCC center, which was going to be good enough for an incubator for new enterprise, is suddenly, oh, now filled with mold and can't be used for a navigation center. It would be a perfect place for a navigation center, right next to the bus stop. I helped out at the Egan Warming Center the other night, and there was an older woman, she was in her 50s, who has been living in her car since August. And she came from an unfortunate relationship, but she didn't want to come inside. She just wanted to sleep in her car because she knew, she said that there were other people whose were in worse conditions than she, and she didn't want to take up a bed. These are the kind of people that, the only safety she found, she wasn't going to get roasted because she was in a parking lot of an Egan Warming Center. We got to stop penalizing, criminalizing people who don't have housing. It's just not okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dallas Smith, followed by Robert Lee Hirsch.
Hello, Councilors. Good evening. My name is Dallas Smith. I live in Ward Eight with my wife and son. I would like to talk to you tonight about accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. So I'm a data analyst by profession, so let's do some math. With a full-time minimum wage employment, a person makes $22,300 a year. After federal and state taxes, with standard deductions removed, they're left with $18,300 a year. Based on the summarized findings in the Housing Tools and Strategies Work Group, the lowest average rent for Eugene last year was in the 97403 ZIP code, and it was at $900 a month. That's $10,800 a year, or 59% of a full-time worker's income. Luckily, this person also qualifies for SNAP of $300, so they won't go hungry. But that still only leaves a little over $600 for utilities, necessities, and anything that may come up. God forbid they have a child that needs diapers. This creates and sustains a cycle of poverty that is almost impossible to escape from. I believe that creating easier access to ADUs is the easiest way to break this cycle and to help people pull themselves up without turning to any additional government handouts. By removing the limiting factors of producing ADUs, we can significantly benefit our lowest-income population at almost no cost of resources to the community. Please consider this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robert Lee Hirsch. Nope, maybe not here anymore? Okay. How about Julian Lieberintitis? And Julian will be followed by Angela Hickman.
Good evening. My name is Julian Lieberintitis. I live in Ward Eight, and I'm here to talk in support of affordable housing measures. Just with a personal example, my wife and I, we own our own home, and we bought our house just seven years ago. And on a recent estimate that I saw online, our house has more than doubled in value, which you would think I'd be excited about, but is more terrifying to me because it's too fast. So I've gone up that much in value. When I'm looking forward out to my friends and family members and community members who are currently watching their rents go higher and higher and looking for places to live and finding fewer and fewer options that they can afford, I find myself just terrified for them. They're not, you know, currently homeless, but they are worried about that. And they're, these are people that are working full-time jobs and making pretty good money and finding it difficult to find places to live. So that number to me was just shocking, and I don't want to take up too much time with the Council here, but just to let you know that like, I am making significantly more money now than I was making seven years ago. And if I was looking to buy a house, I could not afford where I live right now. I consider myself very lucky to have gotten it when I did. So just for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Hickman, followed by Carmel Snyder.
Members of, Mayor, Ms. Mayor, members of the Council. My name's Angela Hickman. I live in Ward Four, and I just wanted to tell a personal anecdote as well. My husband and my children and I have lived in our house for the last 10 years. We're renters. And the only reason that we've been able to continue living in our house is because our landlord is a very nice gentleman who lives next door, and he has not raised our rent in the 10 years that we've lived there. Due to retirement, they've just recently turned the house over to property management. And the first thing that we were told is that our rent is going up. If Senate Bill 608 hadn't have passed, I'm not sure how much it would have gone up, but it's going up by the maximum amount allowed this year. And the property management told us that their goal is to get it up to market value as soon as possible. And that's over $700 at the last estimate, at least. So we're looking at steady increases for the next however many years. When we looked at that, we tried to look and see if there was anywhere else that we could move to that we might be able to afford, and everything else is, of course, at market value, except for rent. So we're looking at immediately a huge jump in our rent and then continuing to do so. And we've been staying in the same home, paying our rent on time. It's a house that my kids have grown up in, and we, you know, we're happy to be long-term renters, but we're concerned for our financial future, given that all we're looking at is more, more rent, more rent, more rent. And even if it gets to a place where we can't afford it anymore, where do we move to? We're not sure even what to do at that point. And we're a family that's been, like, we're not at the poverty level. We're, we've been consistently doing well the last, throughout this entire time. And so it's a, it's a very real concern, not just for the poorest of families, but for people who are just trying to, sorry, I kind of stumbled there, but I just think about, like, I can't imagine if we were living on minimum wage, how you would even find somewhere to live or pay the deposits to get into them with the current housing prices. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carmel Snyder. Is she still here? No. Steve Coatsworth. Okay, Steve is here, and then followed by Drix.
It's good to see all your faces. I am also here with the recently registered nonprofit Springfield Eugene Tenant Association and the, the community events coordinator, I guess, self-titled. I've been organizing, I got to tell you, for about 10 years. It's not something I wanted to do in the first place, but when politics sort of knocks on your door, you have to, to do something. But I will say that none of my friends who are artist types have ever really supported anything that I've ever done. They're like, oh, you're one of those like weird altruistic, like politophile whatevers. And I started trying to find a place for our event for SADA, and in less than an afternoon, I got an internationally renowned musician, about 10 supportive local businesses, and everybody that I know, when I'm like, yeah, is whatever, I'm just doing the political thing, like, we're doing like renters' rights issues. It's an issue that's organizing itself because we're being organized out of our homes. And I know that you're not here to make money, because I know what you make on the City Council, but I do think you could be maybe a little bit more proud of the fact that you have real power to do something about it. I'm willing to try anything. I do think that a two-year CET experiment to see if that'll do something is, is good, you know? I think we got to follow FDR's advice because we're in kind of getting to a bind like him, which is what the country needs right now, and what I think it demands is broad and bold experimentation. Take a thing and try it. If it does not work, admit it frankly, but above all, try something. And I'm starting to see you all try stuff, and I'm proud of that. I'm just asking you to please help us out because we're really, really having a rough time here. I'm about to get priced out of my, my city and have to move to Vanita, and I don't want to live in Vanita. Nothing against Vanita, but this is my home, so, thank you.
Thank you. Drix, followed by Michael Gannon.
Hi, my name is Drix. I'm so glad to be back here. Thank you all, Eugene, E-John. A week long, I practice it, and when I get here, you do the, but I've been coming here for 15 years. Not right here, because I'd be really, my legs would be asleep by now, but I often wonder why am I coming here? What do I bring to the agenda? You all thank me for showing up. You all thank me for showing up. People stop me in grocery stores and thank me for showing up, but what am I doing here? Well, I got a clue. I got a clue this weekend. I thought I better tell you before I forget it. I'm here for you, for Eugene. I'm here to bring new concepts. I, the whole thing started where I'm tired of watching people show up here and yell at you guys. Jeez Louise, you know, and it's more to all of this than that. I'm one that's a, I back a fun government. I think government should be fun. Doesn't that sound like two disparaged words? But no. So that's what I do in here. Everybody that I see on YouTube, I watch it a lot. It's a real great channel. It's an international channel. But there's a lot of people that I really admire and respect. They're speaking to me with big you-vo words, and it's, and they all end their talks by saying, just do something. Get out there. We need to. This is democracy. This is America. So, so that's another reason I'm here, doing it. And the future's going to look all different. A bumper sticker I like to invent would just say, "Change is different." Of course, it's different. We can't go back to a different America. You wouldn't want to. I went through the 50s. It's more glamorous now than it was. But it's going to take new things, and the simplest way, I have a little marketing and ads in my background. I watch a lot of TV. So it's going to have to be something that people don't even know yet, so they can't be against it. And it's going to have to be something that gives us promise, gives us cooperation, communication. We all grab together and we believe each other. So the simplest thing to do is for all of us to realize that, well, it's a, it's a big step, but we're all actually the same person. All of us here, worldwide, if part of the world is starving, that's us. So what do you do? You get them so they can feed themselves and get on with the next issue. And I don't know how to make this work. I don't know the details, but I know who does. You, and you. We're all the same you. And the way this is set up, thank you very much, we have television channels that carry our broadcasts. It's on the internet. With 20 seconds left, I'm going to explain now. Now is a new word that has a new definition. I could say "now," but now, that's past. And if you look us up on the internet, that same now is gonna be months from now. So there's one word we can start rethinking, and I'll bring you the rest at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gannon.
Does it make sense?
Michael Gannon, followed by Julia Hernandez.
I live in Eugene, and I would like to talk to you, as I have a few times, crosswalks authorized by the state of Oregon Legislature at every intersection between streets. Every intersection has four crosswalks, whether they're, whether they're painted, signed, or otherwise. Additionally, I should add that pedestrians in the street have the right of way, no matter where they are or what they're doing. And I've also claimed to be trying to convey a small action on behalf of raining and global warming. And it seems to me like it's a no-brainer that the city of Eugene enforce the highway safety laws that are passed by the state legislature. I, I don't understand why Eugene thinks it doesn't have to do that. I was delighted that Claire took the time in January, when I made this appeal, to talk about it. And she mentioned, as I've mentioned, when she was in California, the cars stopped when she got to the curb and wanted to cross the street. So I wanna quickly read something from a little newsletter I received that you would probably find interesting. It's under the auspices of The Atlantic Magazine. It's called City Lab Newsletter, citilab.com. "The United States is on track to report the highest number of pedestrian fatalities since 1990, with an estimated 6,227 deaths in the preliminary 2018 data. Researchers say that the surge in deaths shows that something has gone terribly wrong in the last 10 years. There are many clues as to why. Americans are spending more time driving, smartphones have been, have introduced new distractions, and more lethal heavy-duty SUVs have proliferated. And old dangers that inhabit drivers like darkness and alcohol have remained stubbornly I'd like to get into that more, but I have, by the clock here, three minutes overtime already.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Julia Hernandez, followed by Eric Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Julia Hernandez. I live in Springfield, working Eugene. I'm a mother of three. My rent is $900 for a two-bedroom, and it will increase in the next year. I lived in Eugene in a low-income housing for five years. I was very grateful for the housing program. My family had a home, yet I lived with excessive mold, broken doors, water and heat problems, discrimination, and other situations. Yet I was grateful. My family had a home. One day, and these days are becoming more frequent in Lynn County, I became a victim of the unfair housing laws in Oregon and became evicted. I was homeless for months. It was hard, embarrassing. I experienced lots of shame. With hard work, support from my families, my community, I was able to have a home again for my family. Some are not as lucky as I am. So I stand before you today, and Thursday I'll be in Salem for the Housing Opportunity Day. We are in a house, housing crisis, in need of urgent housing that is fair, affordable, with dignity. It is a right for all. It is essential for human growth. Without a stable home for our families, our families fall apart. It takes a ripple effect. It takes our mental health to our community's economic development. Please help us and support us to access an affordable housing measure for all. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Eric Jackson, followed by our final speaker, Shelby Shea.
I thought it was a two-minute day, so I'm glad I got three minutes. Counselor Eric Jackson, John. I'm gonna read from cards that inspire me on a regular basis and spend a minute on that. If you have a talent, use it in every which way possible. Don't hoard it. Don't dole it out like a miser. Spend it lavishly like a millionaire intent on going broke. Life is not a path of coincidence, happenstance, and luck, but rather an unexplainable meticulously-charted course for one to touch lives of another. Do everything in the mind of let go. If you let go little, you have a little peace. If you let go a lot, you have a lot of peace. If you let go completely, you'll know complete peace and freedom, and you struggle with the world will come to an end. I do my best to let go a lot, all the time, and let go completely. This weekend, I had to let go of a lot of my dead dad stuff because I was protesting that the shed and some of those high-not-in-my-backyard signatures that got the veto on the downtown shelter, and so many people that can't stay outside, that are from 99 and not from 99, and downtown and not downtown, are outside in Eugene. And I was protesting. And they decided Saturday after weeks of me being there, outside the Constitution-free zone of the activity zone and the Constitution-free zone of the downtown core, where the Constitution doesn't matter, the United States Ninth Circuit Court doesn't matter. And we do in fact arrest for camping and being homeless because a dozen of, half a dozen of us, I apologize, were threatened with, if you do not vacate right now, you will be arrested for the same 4.815 ticket that we were warned about issued, and then because we were in the special Constitution-free zone that Eugene made, right out front here on the city sidewalk. Not to include the Constitution-free zone that can't talk to people in the county court property after 11:00. The Constitution-free zones in Eugene are just overwhelming, and the county's backing it too. With all that, my property was taken in violation of Levon, where they backed up the Constitution of due process of throwing things away. And it was taken because it was in Eugene, Oregon, and it was wet. That's why it was discarded and is now at the dump. Thousands of dollars of property and my dead dad's clothing that I wear with pride, no matter how stained it is. So I guess I just have to let go a lot.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Shelby Shea.
So determination. Being homeless in town is not as fun as it's supposed to be, but I got arrested a couple times for transportation tickets. I just spent eight days in jail, they gave me 18 days' time served, a year probation. I can't leave. I was supposed to go home. So how am I supposed to go home? I can't go home. So instead of using my name as Shelby, they want to use my government name. They know that I don't like to be called that, but they do anyways. How is that fair to me? It's not fair to anybody to be discriminated against. They know my name is Shelby, and they continue and continue to use my government name. It's not fair. It's not right. I can't even, I can't even be downtown. I can't camp nowhere. If I get one ticket, I'm going back to jail for a year. It's not fair. Being homeless is ridiculous in Oregon. I've been homeless for five years, and this has been the worst experience I have been through. Yeah, I stayed in Oregon to help try and get Highway 99 cam back. Tell me how does it dawn, all this money, I stayed there one night. I woke up, someone decided to put a bloody syringe in my bed with a tampon and a razor and a cap. How is that fair to me? What if that would have poked me? What if I would have caught something that I could not get rid of? That's not cool. So I choose not to stay there. I would have slept outside on the sidewalk to go to that does it dawn. We, we felt so much better when we lived at Highway 99 cam. We had a freedom. We didn't get tickets. We didn't store. We had rights. Now we ain't got nothing. It's not fair. Something needs to be done. I can't afford housing. I get $700 a month. What does that go into me? I can't even find a one-bedroom. It's not fair. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now.
Thank you. And that is the final speaker for our public forum. That closes the public forum. Are there councilors who wish to make any comments on anything you've heard? Counselor Clark? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the folks who are organized around the Renters Association. I think anytime folks are getting together to try and get their voice heard is a good thing. I happen to disagree with you, but I appreciate your efforts. I think I'm the only guy at the table that rents too, so I could join. But I will tell you that I'm 1,000% certain the passing of CET will make rents higher. Really simple economics. And I'll bet any of you you like, because it'll pass. I'm reasonably certain that the votes are here at the table for it to pass. Anybody wanna take me up on that? Anybody wanna bet me that two years from now, a year from now, rents will be higher? It won't effectively do what you're suggesting it will do. It won't make the situation better, it'll make it worse. And that's why I'll vote against it, because I think it's the wrong way for us to go to address a very important problem. I agree with you about that, and I'm glad you were here tonight to talk, and I appreciate your testimony. But to make housing more affordable, the folks that work in our department for affordable housing work predominantly on two things: decreasing the cost of land and decreasing the external costs that apply to the building of housing. We at the council table are, have, have a, have a very large influence on both of those things. And if we wanted to make housing less, less costly, those are the two things, just like our city department does, that we should be working on to make it more affordable. Argued this for years. Instead, we're gonna add to the external costs with a CET. Now, I'll tell you that there are probably three companies in our community that build more housing for people than any others. And I'm not gonna out them, but there's a guy in the room who's part of running that company, and he'll tell you, he'll tell you just as sure as I'm sitting here, that making the costs more expensive to build homes, make it more expensive for everybody, it passes down. And now with 608 passing, it'll be even more so. So I would encourage you to get yourself educated about the two things this council could be doing and advocate for those. Make bare land more affordable and more available for building homes on, and decrease the external costs on the building of housing. Thank you.
Any other councilors? All right, I just do a quick thing just to follow on my, just a prompt to the folks on housing. Thank you for coming out. We're actually not voting on the CET itself until April 8th. So we have a Housing Tools and Strategies Work Session this coming Wednesday, and so we'll be looking at some of those possible strategies, but the vote is not until after our spring break. And I don't think anyone is still here on the 5G. And just wanna put it out there for the public that the city of Eugene has, I have signed on to a House bill, 530, at the federal legis, federal level, advocating for, that, that would return a local government's capacity to be invested in our interests and our rights of way. So we're, I mean, a resolution is a good thing. I'm not opposed to a resolution. If a council wants to bring a resolution forward, a resolution doesn't have the force of law. But we have signed on to federal, a federal bill before the Congress to advocate a return of local control of our rights of way. So we are working on that, and I am concerned about the health impacts of 5G. So you're not speaking to deaf ears. I'm hearing you and interested in, I actually have a young intern who is helping me do a lit survey on some of the health studies. So I am interested. We are working on it, and thank you for showing up in force. And I think with that, we are ready to proceed with our other council business. So first up is Consent Calendar. Can I have a motion on the Consent Calendar?
I move to approve the items on the Consent Calendar.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Thank you very much. Next item, public hearing and action FY 2025 Capital Improvement Program. Manager, do you want to introduce that, or?
I will, Mayor. Thank you. The CIP Capital Improvement Program is a multi-year capital planning document that serves as a roadmap for the city's capital projects for the next six fiscal years. The draft FY 2025 CIP was presented to the Budget Committee on February 20th. An opportunity for public comment on the document was also provided at that time. The Budget Committee discussed the draft and passed a motion recommending approval of the draft CIP as presented by city staff.
All right. The, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Same rules apply. Those wishing to speak must have completed a request to speak form. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of your three minutes. I have three speakers. First up, Teresa Bisho, followed by John Borowski.
I am Teresa Bisho. I live in Ward Two, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Crescent Village Association, which includes the property owners of 603 homes, as well as over 62,000 square feet of commercial space near Stryker Field Park in Ward Four. We appreciate the tremendous amount of work done by city staff and the Budget Committee to prepare the draft CIP before you this evening. We believe the draft CIP misses the mark with regard to Stryker Field Park. First, the draft falls short with regard to voter accountability. The 2018 parks bond explicitly listed Stryker Field Park as a priority for park improvements. There was nothing in the ballot measure that suggested the improvements would be phased. We understand the draft CIP contains no funding from the bond measure for Stryker Field Park. Second, the overall allocation of funds for parks are heavily tilted towards areas downtown and in South Eugene. This repeats a historic pattern and fails to demonstrate a fair and equitable geographic distribution of funds. Third, it's more cost-effective and environmentally sound to construct park improvements at one time versus phased. Stryker Field Park is the oldest vacant park in the entire city's park system. To construct in phases makes no sense. Fourth, Stryker Field Park is 8.36 acres, likely twice the size of the average city neighborhood park. Lastly, the park site has unusual conditions that warrant greater funding, such as the need for street improvements along Grand Cayman Drive, including sidewalks, street trees, streetlights, and the need to extend Shadowview Drive to enhance park access and safety. Over the last decade, Northeast Eugene has experienced tremendous amount of growth. You know this. Now is the time to dedicate resources to fully fund Stryker Field Park. Your support for this request will create a more equitable geographic distribution to the SDC park fees and will build trust with the voters regarding the park bond funds. Thank you.
Thank you. John Borowski, followed by, oh, I have two. Okay. Just John Borowski. Oh, followed by John Jaworski. Sorry, I got confused.
We're close. We get mixed up a lot. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is John Borowski, and I live in Ward One. I'm here to give testimony on the FY 20 to 25 CIP. I'm here to give testimony on the FY 20 to 25 C I P. After getting a presentation at the Planning Commission and doing my own review, there are a few things that I would like to point out. First off, I think staff did an excellent job of compiling the projects and document in a way that reflects the council's priorities as well as the community needs. I also believe that the inclusion of the C R O metrics was an informative and useful tool for pursuing council direction on climate change. This allows staff one more lens to prioritize projects going forward. The second thing that I'd like to bring forward to your attention is the fact that the plan was developed using the goals and policies set forth by you and earlier councils. One of those policies is Policy B 11, which states that a priority of the use of the marginal beginning working capital is for general capital project fund. Historically, the first $900,000 of this goes to the fund. This C I P counted the $900,000 in the amount for all six years, coming to $5.4 million. I think it's important to keep this in mind in the past and going forward. The marginal beginning working capital has not always made this transfer, whether because of not enough carryover or because council felt there was a more important need for that money. I bring this up because as you heard earlier this evening, there are many needs for additional funding throughout the organization and marginal beginning working capital seems to be an easy source of one-time funding. That being said, if you look at the C I P on page 130, you will see that the city's building deferred maintenance should be funded at best practices at between 2% and 4%. We are funding, funding it at 1.7%. We've seen how that can snowball. Just look what we learned from our street bonds. So I urge you to keep this in mind when you're looking at other uses for the marginal beginning working capital. Thank you. And I also recommend passage of this C I P. And now that I've said that, I just wanted to say thanks to Trix for coming out and bringing some positive civics to our civic discourse. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, John Jaworski.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilors. My name is John Jaworski. I'm a resident of Ward Four. I've spoken in the past over the decade of trying to advocate for Stryker Field. That's specifically what I'm going to talk to tonight. We have been working and following every process and addressing every requirement that the city presented to us each time we came forward. We were successful in collaborative work with the Parks Department, Public Works, and the city's administrative offices in moving forward and getting into the parks plan as a number one project priority. When we went to the parks to try to move forward on this, they lacked staff at that time and asked us, why don't you move forward on it? And when we have staff, we'll work on this. We formed a committee of 10 representing the various, as you know, thousands of new dwelling units that have grown up, including Baskin Village around the park. We had input from almost 600 residents and they talked about the various amenities and what they would like to see this park look like when developed. It's a unique park, nothing like it would exist in Eugene at this time because it would be cross multifunctional, it would have everything for various ages and address kinds of amenities that don't exist in other parks. We don't want a swimming pool there though. However, when we did do this and we presented it to parks, they said they'd have to wait for some time to see what has happened. We've processed and went and met with the city manager, past Public Works Director, past counselor of Ward Four, current counselor of Ward Five, our chair and myself. And we sat down to try to address this issue. At that time, we were informed that there were more than enough funds to develop this park, $3 to $4 million. The issue was they didn't have maintenance and therefore could not do this. We indicated Northeast Neighbors would move forward to develop a special district and raise those funds. The city said, no, don't do that. We're looking forward to maybe moving forward with a bond issuance that will not only address other citywide issues, but the maintenance issue. We said, okay, we'll hold off and we'll do everything we can to inform our residents of the bond issue that hopefully they'll support it, that not only benefits them, but the city as a whole. We did do that and the bond issue passed. We then went up and we found that when we talked with parks, they were talking about a phasing and they were also talking about a limited amount of funds, which said, this isn't what we were told. When we look at the C I P, what we see in there that it's something called Phase One and only $700,000. That's a far cry from what we told was available. I'd like to end this with saying, we kept our part of the bargain by doing what we said and we're hoping that the city will keep its commitment to come forward with funds to fully develop this park for one of the fastest growing areas in Eugene and the thousands of residents around there and all the development that has occurred without having any tax abatements. I mean, they're playing the full load and they should have something from it. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And that is our final testimony. Are there, I have Mike in the queue. Councilor Clark, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to pick up on Teresa and John's testimony there and thank Mr. Borowski as well for coming. I've worked on this issue for this park and it's not even my ward for five years. I've been in plenty of meetings with John and I've been in meetings with Kevin, Teresa. I've been in meetings with all of them and city staff and Sarah and John for years on this issue. And I know that the planning of it has taken place over a very long period of time. We planned the Riverfront Park in 18 months. We bought it three months ago. Stryker Field was purchased when Jim Torrey was mayor. You know, it's been 15 years that we've owned it and been planning this. And I, that's why I expressed shock at the meeting we had, a budget committee and the C I P that had only said 700 grand and that was per partial funding of Phase One. So I have an amendment and I will speak to it for another little bit if I get a second to move to amend the C I P to reflect full funding for Stryker Field Park. And that, a portion of that funding come from the bond campaign.
Second.
What's that?
Hold tight.
I, I specifically left that motion vague as to numbers with both regarding the total project cost and with regard to the amount from the bond. There are two things that are absolutely certain though. North Eugene worked very hard in many ways. The only reason I didn't fight the park bond and levy was because I thought, well, I think it's a really bad idea for us to do this this way, but at least Stryker Field's finally going to get built. And only Stryker Field and the pool were even any part of anything for anybody in North Eugene in that campaign. And it was very specifically put out front as the thing that would be delivered for the folks in that part of town if it passed. And it's just unjust to those folks who were asked to trust the city to say that they'll get anything less than that part completed with money from the bond campaign that they worked on, not to mention literally the years that the Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Leaders have put into this. So I hope my, I hope my colleagues will support the motion. And if anybody wants to offer a friendly with regard to specific amounts or staff has recommendations, I'd be happy to hear that. Thank you.
Comments question here?
Were you making a motion or were you going to wait for the motion and then make an amendment? I didn't understand what you're, what you're doing.
You're correct. I should wait.
Yeah, you should.
Okay. I, let me say then that I would like to make that as an amendment. Mayor, if you will, in the queue, as soon as the main motion is, is put forward.
There we go.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 20 to 25 Capital Improvement Program as recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Okay. Now.
I move to amend in the manner I just spoke.
Now, second. Okay. So, Counselor Sample and then Counselors Lenka.
I approve of this. I agree that North Eugene doesn't get a fair shake. I think that what we're doing downtown is critical, not just for downtown. And it's good that we're putting a lot of resources and time in it. But this project's been going on for a long time and, and I really think we need to give a, a vote of approval and support to North Eugene. So I'm definitely going to support it whether it comes from C I P or the bond. I think it should come from both. And when I was talking about this with Jennifer and, and Parks, it turns out that they'd like to use it sometimes in the summer for events, but they can't because there's no bathroom. So even if we get the, the funding settled tonight, I, I'm not going to make a motion because I don't think it's necessary. But I would really like to have the city pay for some porta potties until the, the park's constructed so that this area of Eugene can enjoy an area that has been set aside for their use. And I appreciate my colleague for bringing this forward.
Okay, Counselors Lenka, then Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, I wanted to make some other comments, but I'll address this issue. I probably support this motion, but I think it makes the following motion that we're trying to amend kind of completely unclear. This is several million dollars worth of, of money. 1.3 more than, than the 700,000. And so I don't know what then we're voting on in the C I P if they're, unless we're going, what are we taking out? That's 3.7 million dollars or 3.3 million dollars. And, and so I don't know that the C I P needs to be voted on tonight. Maybe the motion should just bring this back and then we'll vote on the C I P. Because I think this is too big to just kind of stuff in there the way that. I probably support the motion. I just don't know what then C I P looks like.
Manager, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. One, the intent all along is still to build a full park and to fund the park. I think part of the concern is just what is the cost in going through the planning process? So one way to address this, rather than a vague motion like that, those were your words, a vague motion like that, you could have a different motion that would direct us to bring back the funding as part of the FY 20 budget. That I think also would address your question. And so what we would bring back to you is the funding for the park, for the build out of the park with a recommendation on sources and all and include that as part of your FY 20 budget.
Would that, would that include an amendment to the C I P to reflect those once passed?
Yeah, ultimately it would reflect in the C I P if it's over a multiple year, just like any other project, it could get built back into the C I P. But that, what that does is at least allows a better sense of what is the dollar amount that you're actually going to want to authorize and then appropriate in any particular year. And then the rest can be built into the C I P.
I know from previous discussions that that's going to take some time to figure out and that they want to put the neighborhood in, into the, into a further expanded process to figure out what that total budget's going to be. I don't mind the idea in a C I P of looking at total funding capacity to fully build and for us to, to get a more of a fine point over time, that's fine. But there are two things that are important to this for me. Number one, it's fully funded and we've not completed in 2022, but that it gets completed in the next year or two. And if it in any way has to be phased, that I, I don't even, I don't like the word phased with this because it'll inevitably get drawn out forever. So any funding that comes forward from my perspective would want to be fully funding Plan A, you know, beginning to end, what will it cost so we can pass it? And if any of my colleagues are offering what the manager just said as a friendly amendment, I might take it.
I'll offer it as a friendly amendment.
I'll ta, I'll take it under the conditions I just said.
I'll offer it as a friendly amendment, but I, I don't think you can plan and build a park in a year.
We've done it. We're doing it on the riverfront. That was my point.
That's 18 months. He's going to tell you what he's. So I'm, I'm just trying to help you out here. If that's a condition, it's probably not going to be met, but we could put it in there.
Yeah, I think it is part of the budget process. We, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I'm just being coughing this whole time. I wasn't hinting at anything.
We can provide the budget and the, and the construction schedule specifically as part of the budget process and we're happy to do that.
Then I will accept that as a friendly from Alan.
Okay, so what exactly are we voting on now?
John. You, John.
As long as it comes forward in a timely fashion.
You, John.
Well, the information will come as part of the budget, the budget that's coming in FY 20. So you'll have that in the next, in April is when we start the budget conversation.
Done.
The budget presentation is April 20 something, so.
Done.
Okay. So, so just so everybody's clear, and I think Counselors Lenka asked your question, is I understand it, the amendment would be to directing the city manager to come back as part of the FY 20 budget with full funding for the Stryker Field in an unfazed.
Correct.
And schedule.
Correct.
As a, as a schedule.
Yes. Is that accurate?
We can debate the details of that at the time, but we'll have that during budget to do.
So that is your new amendment.
So we are voting to approve the C I P with this amendment. We have to vote on the amendment first. Vote on the amendment first and then include, okay. Are we ready for vote? Any other questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Okay, that passes.
I have another comment before we vote on the.
Okay, all right, go for it.
And this is not related to that issue, but I wanted to thank the staff and all the folks that worked on the C I P, especially for the greenhouse gas emission calculations that we've done and that. I think that was great work. It's a good start. All of our decisions and all of our work that needs to go through this rigorous kind of process to figure out the greenhouse gas impacts of all of our actions at the city. And that's kind of the point of that exercise. And doing this calculation is the first step. The next step is to use that information and then to make decisions. And to do this, we need to assess the alternatives and create that, that do in fact create fewer greenhouse gas emissions so we can meet our C R O goals. Examples include the, most notably, the warm asphalt stuff that we've done. That reduces the overall greenhouse gas. It's a clever, very innovative way of doing it, but we need to go beyond that. For instance, pool heating is a quarter of our operational budget. And, and operational greenhouse gas footprint, sorry, it's kind of late. And planned increases in the pools means that our footprint for that's going to increase unless we look at alternatives that will lower our greenhouse gas emissions through water heating technologies and other kinds of things and maybe in fuel switching. On new buildings, we can use the 1.5% green energy technology state law to put, add rooftop solar PVs on all of our new buildings. We can increase the lead certification up to gold and platinum when we can. And, and every time we do a modification to a building or an upgrade, we should increase the energy efficiency beyond what we can do that's still cost effective. So using all this information about the greenhouse gas emissions that we're doing to make decisions is, is what this is about. Our biggest contributor is the transportation system. And so the next plan that needs to come back to us in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and calculations is in the T S P or the Transportation System Plan. So we need to quantify the impacts of options there using that information, then choose lower greenhouse gas footprint options to incorporate that back into our decision making so we're informed by the data, but actually impacts the, the, the Transportation System Planner, T S P. So that would mean more emphasis on walking, biking transit and a smarter transportation system. So using this data, getting the data is one thing, using it is a different thing. So we've done a really excellent job of getting the data. Now let's use it to make real smart decisions and get our, towards our C R O goals.
And Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, thank you. I like where this wound up in terms of the flexibility that we built into. We're still going to accomplish our main goal, which is getting Stryker Field developed, but it provides us with the ability to really put together a thoughtful plan for how to do it. And I do agree with the timely element. When I was first elected to the council, Stryker Field was mentioned and that was 2005. So I've been hearing about Stryker Field now for a long time. So I think it's fine that we, that we get it developed now. I think that's okay. And I think the system we've come up with is equitable, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, ready for a vote on the C I P? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five? And it passes and opposed, thank you very much. Two other quick pieces of business. Not, don't jump out of that chair just yet, Counselor Clark. Okay, I am adjourning the meeting of the City Council, opening the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And do you want to speak to this or, so I can speak to this? This is an appointment to the River Guides. I am putting forward a, a name, Karen Williams, to fill another seat in the River Guides. We've actually had to fill this seat twice. And it is the seat that's been occupied by a person with designed. a person with design background. Karen Williams is an architect, and so she brings that design element that we want, and she's eager to do this work, so I'm putting her name forward and hoping you will approve it, so.
I move to appoint the mayor's nomination of Karen Williams to the River Guides.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Thank you very much. And I'm going to close the meeting of the River Guides, reopen the council meeting briefly for Counselor Zelenka.
At the mayor's request, I put forward a motion, actually, this morning, I meant to do it last night, but I didn't get to it, and it's about lottery bond funding for the YMCA. And just real quickly, YMCA has, actually, I was kind of stunned to learn this, it's been in Eugene since 1887. That's 132 years, and they were in train cars, in logging camps, rooms of the U of O, and downtown, and now they're on Patterson Street, and they need to build a new facility across the street where the old high school used to be. So that building will be a 70,000-square-foot building. The condition and the size of the existing building is what's keeping the Y from expanding and doing more of the good work that they do. So what this resolution does, and I'll just read it real quickly. So the City Council supports the allocation in 2019 by the Oregon Legislature of lottery-backed bond funds to the Eugene family YMCA for the construction of a new YMCA facility, provided that current video lottery proceeds for local economic development are maintained. This is the same thing we did for the Eugene Civic Alliance, to get them $6 million to help build the new facilities there. So with that, I move to adopt resolution supporting allocation of lottery-backed bond funds to the Eugene family YMCA for construction of a new YMCA facility in Eugene.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. None opposed. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned at 10 o'clock.